Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome to this festive period special, well, council for council. Before we start, I'd like to make two announcements. The first, that we have a minute's silence in remembrance of a former mayor, Mayor O'Me, who was buried today. So please be respectful and warm these. Thank you very much. Second announcement, I must apologize to those of you that weren't here when we actually said prayers. That was probably an hour on my part. I've got it in my head 10 to 6, so I do apologize most sincerely for that. And it will be addressed at the next full council meeting, where we will have prayers at 6 o'clock in the Members' Room and then reconvene with all of the other members about 6:10. So apologies for that. Thank you. Right. If you'd like to sit down, if you feel you're at the wall, then feel free to sit down.
Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence and the councillor's indulgence for our conversation, I'm grateful to you for affording us a minute's silence for Derek Owen. Derek's family were very pleased to know that he would be remembered tonight. As you mentioned, he was promoted today and mention was made at the funeral, both for his public service and of his commitment to the town. And we've seen in recent years that where colleagues like councillor Norkey, councillor Clements, people who were rooted in their communities become mayor means a huge amount to them. And the lot was made at the time, at the service today, of the fact that he was born in Womacka, grew up in Womacka, lived his, moved to Belgrade at the end, I know, but I suppose not everything within his, in regards to Womacka. But from a practical point of view, he was somebody who really, really felt for the town. And I think myself and councillor Standard had the longest overlap with him, although councillor Thorpe would have overlapped with him at the end of his career. He was a lovely, warm individual and he chaired meetings very carefully at the time, there was about a 2010 split under council or social, significant number of opposition members, and he always accorded them respect and pride that they deserved. And I think he was from that point a real model citizen, Mr. Mayor, and I thank you for appearing to the opportunity to remember him. Oh, and sorry, one other thing. At the time, he was presented with his ultimate award. I saw his son a bit later, a week or so later, and he said how he'd come home thrilled bits and put the certificate on. And I thank all those members who were here then, because when we did catch up with the award of all the awards, it didn't mean that some people who'd served for many years, in his case over 20, you know, did receive that recognition. And I'm grateful to everyone for making that possible. Very nice to hear.
Thank you councillor People. As you're aware, again tonight, we have with us Mr. Hild and his camera. Now, a few notes on that. These are the ones that have been prepared here. Whilst we accept the council encourages transparency in our decision-making, we must also ensure that we have advised all those present and to ensure that we have made all reasonable adjustments where appropriate. We must balance the need for openness with the need to protect the privacy rights of any members of the public who are attending tonight's meeting. I would also draw your attention to the council's notice for filming slash recording, which can also be found attached to the walls around the room, I believe. There are copies available from Army and House and Democratic Services if required. I would also address some concerns that have been raised around members of the public being filmed. The council's protocol requires that no members of the public are deliberately filmed. The area is set aside at the rear of the chamber, which in this instance is a tripod, sorry, there is a tripod mounted high up on my right, which should allow any filming to be carried out without risk of any accidental filming of the public. However, if any members of the public are still concerned, then I would ask that they take into account where the filming will be taking place from and seek themselves accordingly. Again, I thank Mr. Hild for his time and assistance in filming tonight's meeting. Thank you all for your attention. We'll now start with the formal meeting and start with item one on the agenda, which is apologies for absence. Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can add apologies for councillor Hen Bailey, who was on very well at the moment, councillor Roy Rogers, who's recently had surgery, and of course councillor Thomas Jay, who was less than their second child yesterday, who was already born.
Thank you councillor Cook. Any other absences?
Mr. Mayor, I think it would be inappropriate if we weren't to vote apologies from councillor James, because I spoke to his mother-in-law earlier on this afternoon in a social event where councillor Shrewdley was cooking, Mr. Hild, the people that the group runs, and she said that he was glad to visit his wife, who's made good progress in hospital this evening. So I think in true spirit, we ought to recall that as an apology since he has no group leader to put them in office. Very true.
Thank you. Yeah. If anyone sees councillor Jay, I hope he stays on our best regards. We should speed you recovery for his wife.
I think, Mr. Mayor, the group leader would pass on our congratulations to councillor James. I'm sure we're all very pleased for him to have all this back.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay. It's Jay, I'm sorry. Right, next item, item two, to receive the minutes of the previous meeting. Do we have a president?
Mr. Mayor, happy to move on.
Okay, thank you councillor.
Mr. Mayor, second those who reserve the right, on the grounds that the minutes are correct, can I draw attention to the fact which I have drawn to the attention of the leader and the chief executive, that that records that councillor Price is champion of Tamworth Centre, but it breaches the constitution? So I'm looking to hear from the leader that that's be rectified, since it's correct to the record.
Okay. All those leaning to support and? Agreed. That is a majority, so, Eric. Right. Item three, declarations of interest. Do we have any? Councillor Hill, do you?
Thank you, Chair. I'll have to declare that I've got an interest in all of the nonsense.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Standard.
Just to point out that I'm a member, who works in dental services and has a lot of experience in that front.
Can people speak up a little bit more, because there's one or two people can't hear what's been said. Thank you very much.
Okay. Councillor Hill. Councillor Hill, I'll take it it's me that's...
No, not you, not just you, Mr. Mayor, there's one or two other people that have just said they cannot hear what's been said.
Very much.
Okay, thank you.
You'll have to put a bit more volume into it. Thank you. Right, item four, to receive any announcements from the mayor, leader, members of the cabinet and the chief executive. Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you councillor People. Patch me on that, I haven't heard anything here. You are quite correct, how our constitution is worded says that no one receiving an SRA or a chairman can be a champion under a cabinet member. That is quite correct. Myself and councillor Richell will work to rectify the constitution on that matter through its natural process as the committee meets going forth. But we will honor that for now. Of course, the legislation says if you're a scrutiny chairman, we've actually worked it wrong in our constitution, so we will look to that. In the meantime, of course councillor Price cannot carry the role as champion. I hope he continues to help councillor Claymore in that role, but obviously cannot officially carry the title. I would also like to announce that I will be appointing councillor Thomas Jay as a champion for our performance and finance, working with myself, helping the budget process and improve quality of employment for us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor. Councillor People, any announcements? No? Okay, right. We move on to... Any from yourself? No? Okay. Question time. It's defined as to answer questions from members of the public, pursuant to procedure rule number 10, and also to answer questions from the members of the council pursuant to procedure rule number 11. No questions from the public? Any from the members? Yeah, we do indeed have one or two. Right. The first question is from councillor People.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I say by the way that I welcome the leader's decision to afford a new young councillor an opportunity to learn the ropes on the budget process? I'm sure I'll benefit him and everyone else. Question number one then, Mr. Mayor. As the council states, Tamworth has been open for business since the 7th century and traffic movements on junction 10 are now regularly slower than that of a Saxon horse and cart. Would the leader of the council tell us what steps he has taken to gain funding to alleviate the problems being faced by businesses based in Tamworth and those based in North Borrigshire but which provide considerable employment to our residents? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor People. Councillor Cook, would you also respond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's an important point and it's important that I cover the whole question so the council will indulge me.
Teddy Havlik of Vienna University in Austria, a PhD and expert in experimental physics, states that the average speed of a horse and cart is barely faster than a walk. He expects the average speed of a cow to be near 5 kilometres an hour or 10 kilometres an hour per month. Speed depends on many factors, including quality of road, weather, nature of the travelling path. One estimate suggests that smaller groups with horses can move as much as 30 miles per single day. On the other hand, a larger group including pack animals, a cart, travellers who are on foot might make only half the distance. This would not however include rest days, roads, natural obstacles such as river, mountains and so forth. So if we set for the sake of argument that the horse, the cart, all travellers and associated carry-on goods aboard travel at an average speed of 7 kilometres per hour, so basically 4.38 miles an hour, then the distance from the top of the slip road at Ventura to the slip road going north on the M42 at junction 10 would give or take exactly 3 miles. It would therefore take horse and cart and travellers and associated carry-on goods around 41 minutes just to traverse this distance. Even in rush hour, other than an accident on the A5, I'm sure I can get from Ventura to over junction 10 in less than 41 minutes in my lovely form of focus. Incidentally, the government calculated average speed for rush hours in this area is 18 miles an hour. What do we... Time for this analysis, Mr. Mayor. We deduced that the leader of the opposition is playful in these questions. I'm pretty sure I can reciprocate in my answers. Well, it is a genuine question and deserves a genuine answer. Councillor People is correct that the junction is critical to residents, businesses and visitors to Tamworth. This is clear, it is a busy junction and often experiencing congestion at peak times. This could possibly reflect on the success we have for the place, people going to and from work, businesses moving goods and services and visitors coming to experience our excellent pleasure offer. The responsibility for the A5 and M42, especially junction 10, is Highways England. And we're aware that Highways England have been studying routes recently and the councillor passed our county policy to ensure in their discussions with Highways England, to ensure the junction's considered. They advise us, to both us and North Borrigshire council, when applications for further development come in, to request monies to undertake mitigation works as needed and as opportunities arise. We also monitor the activities of the A5 partnership, of which Highways England is a member, and has recently produced a strategy which acknowledges the congestion and the capacity issues in the area. Thus, it is clear that this is a large strategic matter on the Midland side. And in wider discussions about strategic roads and the Midlands area, Midlands Connect and the West Midlands Committee Authority are key players for the reason why we are a member of the West Midlands Committee Authority and East Midlands of Tamworth. On Monday, the 2nd of December 2018, cabinet and senior officers met with representatives of HS2. We very strongly made our plea and declared in regards HS2 crossing or cutting through the junction and the opportunities this presents to retention of fixed junction. We will be following up the partnership with our MD to argue that further work should be done to improve the capacity and alleviate any congestion. The MD, Christopher Pincher, has also asked me at the start of December all information on the junction so he can personally speak to the minister. I provided him chapter and verse on the forward to his findings that any comments could be raised. I'm also aware that Eddley and Bedworth, sorry, including Bosworth councils are communicating with government in regards to the A5 and also based the points around junction 10 in their expressions to the minister. Given the developments in North Borrigshire Borough Council's local plan for housing and extensions of birth coverts, it is essential this stays on our radar and opportunities to mitigate or improve the junction remain a priority and hopefully where possible so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor Cook. Supplementary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always good at Christmas to feed councillor Cook a question because he always enjoys answering. Now that he's had that enjoyment, I'll draw it back to one of the points he made, which is that the developments that are proposed mean that we have an opportunity to seek mitigation. However, in the most recent presentation you had by the developer for over 1,500 homes, they were proposing that the traffic impact study showed no need to do anything. So I think we're going to have to cut through, what I'm asking the leader of the council is to continue now to make real endeavours, to ask people to think big. Because we all, most of us were at the meeting where when various councillors said, well surely you could have another junction a bit further up to take some of the traffic, we got the Highways England policies not to allow more than one junction within 70 miles. And we were all thinking, hang on, what about 31, 31A, 23, 23A? We can all see where these policies have gone wrong. So what I'm asking the leader to do is to commit, obviously he's hoping the current member of parliament, congratulations on him being restored to the previous council, that we will continue to have influence. But what we're hoping is that we're going to get the money, because there's no record of HS2 paying out unless they're going underneath the marginal constituency in the green part of England, in which case they might adopt. But that's the only sort of mitigation we've seen so far. And out of that 62 million, I think some of it should be coming to junction 10 or we'll get trains going past here at 200 kilometres an hour doing nothing for Tamworth to destroy our district based around this region.
Thank you councillor People.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Valuable points. I can assure councillor People, myself and councillor Claymore and Mr. Barrett made a very regular conversation with the county council. The county council are currently producing a pan-traffic impact report. We're hoping to see at some point around election time this year, not tying the electoral act at 2020 ready. Basically, they're also leaning on Borrigshire to produce their side of it. What we want to do is tamper with it, if it's costous, to tamper a little bit of money to connect to, see what the impact is, what the report should achieve. As all power developments come online over the next 20 years, should they all happen, what starts to happen to connectivity of our roads? And this report is going to be essential as to actually find possible improvements where it exists on mitigation that actually works for Tamworth. So you're part of a piece of work. I'd like to thank the council for taking on for us.
Thank you councillor. Right, question number two is also from councillor Simon People.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
We're allowed to, and it seems to be a pattern, we always get last of one after the other. This is a question to councillor Cook as leader. I'm sure leader would wish to join me and congratulate all those volunteers who have made Spin a success over the past 30 years in Tamworth and wish them well in their new base in the United Church. Will the leader assure me that in the redevelopment of the site in Tamworth you said to, jointly with the county council, Tamworth Borough Council will ensure that the original covenant that the land would be used for the benefit of young people in Tamworth will be honored if not in the future used at that specific site, but through a financial settlement with trustees, having support services on the site in Tamworth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillor People.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for questioning councillor People. I have half congratulated and admired the volunteers of Spin, as I'm sure we are aware the group is for young people and has over 40 who are special needs. Spin used to me every Wednesday at Tamworth New Centre on 7:15 to 9:00 during term time. I'm pleased to hear they have secured new home. In regards to covenants on the land, I'm afraid at this time I must confess when I received councillor People's question on Friday the 7th of December, this is the first I had heard of the covenants, never mind whether he told or understood it. I would hope these matters are resolved as the project moves into planning stages, on the project and more meetings put on the bones to understand what we can do and what we can't do with the land. At present, we are still analyzing the best opportunities for the land, still in talks with the county council about the use of the land and the run rate they are. Therefore, at present, we don't have an answer. But as this is a county matter, I will ask the chief executive officer, Christopher Barrett, to write to the county chief executive officer, Mr. Henderson, to obtain more information or to better consider how the project performs.
Thank you councillor.
I thank the leader for that response. The fact that the question was received on Friday reflects the fact that the timetable for submitting them is on Thursday, and therefore should not be recorded as some sort of failure to raise. But more importantly, Mr. Mayor, it is in one sense a county matter, but if we are to proceed with the redevelopment as a partner and we have heads of agreement, so therefore we are partners, then the original donation of the land and the relevant use avenue must be taken into account by our legal team in drawing up the overall plan. So they mustn't get squeezed out just because the county council's at the table and the borough council's at the table and the original trustees are not. And that's what I'm looking for, is an honest resolution of this, and I don't want the county council saying, oh well, it's a covenant, it doesn't run with the land. You know, at the end of the day, it's a moral issue, we should be fair to the young people at Tamworth. And I think the leader shares my concern that the right thing is done. So I thank him for his answer.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again councillor People. I can only really rest on my first answer, I haven't read the covenant and I'm not understanding of it at present, so again, I'll ask Mr. Barrett to get some of the details from the county council, and I'll be happy to talk to councillor People and colleagues about, you know, what the covenant needs and what we're expected to do. You're right, it is a project we're going to be a lead partner on, so we do need to understand all the limitations or opportunities on the project. So we'll make sure it takes a serious part of our considerations. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Before we go to councillor, question number three. I'd just like to welcome councillor James to the chamber and offer him our best wishes towards you, I.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apologies very much.
No, don't worry. Right. Question number three is from councillor Sherry People.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In response to concerns raised by residents, I took part in a traffic survey on Sheepcoat Lane on a Saturday morning, which revealed that over 200 vehicles per hour were using the road in each direction between 9am and 10am. Will the portfolio holder accept that the council's assurances that the building of 1,100 homes in Amington would have no significant impact on local traffic for residents of Amington and Bol Hall were erroneous?
Thank you councillor People. I believe councillor Michelle Cook, he's going to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you councillor People for the question. Firstly, whilst I'm sure councillor People, as the shadow member for my portfolio, is aware I was not the portfolio holder responsible for pushing element three, as my portfolio does not cover new build private housing, and I am, as an Amington councillor and cabinet member on this council, more than happy to stand up and meet with you, Mr. Mayor, and my fellow councillors and the public here tonight, to categorically confirm I do not believe that assurances that Tamworth Borough Council gave to its residents were erroneous regarding the new 1,100 homes in Amington. I note with interest that councillor People took part in an unofficial traffic count on Sheepcoat Lane, especially so, as I'm reliably informed by Staffordshire County Council, that councillor People did not once during her time as the area's representative on the county council request any official traffic counts on Sheepcoat Lane. This is a situation that has been rectified twice since the new Conservative county councillor for Amington and Bol Hall took over, and with a third traffic survey planned for the road in January 2019. Whilst I'm willing to comment on statistically and verified figures provided by councillor People in their question, I am happy to report that since the first of these official surveys was undertaken in 2017 and following the significant investment which has happened this year on Amington and Tamworth roads, traffic on Sheepcoat Lane reduced over a 12-month period by 14%, which was confirmed this morning by the county council. This is a clear indication that people are no longer diverting along Sheepcoat Lane from Tamworth Road due to its marshing landscape being fixed, which is something I'm aware that residents in both Amington and Bol Hall have welcomed. The third survey is being undertaken following some residents' concerns along Sheepcoat Lane and around the roads. So I and the other Amington councillors, more than happy to get those shared with Bol Hall councillors as well, look forward to an update on this in early 2019. We will of course ensure that the county council communicate these results to local residents along with any actions which are needed. To assure anyone here tonight who are listening, during the application of the new homes in Amington, as with any other development proposal, a full traffic assessment was carried out and mitigation measures identified where needed. As councillor People would have been aware, as the then county councillor for the area, no objections were received from Staffordshire County Council as the local highway authority or from the, or from Highways England, who were also consulted. This lack of concern by Highways experts was of course noted by the planning committee at Tamworth in their decision to progress and plans were passed accordingly. There was of course an acknowledgement that there would be an increase in traffic movements related to this development. After all, these new residents have every right, as does any other member of the public, to use public roads. But these increases were accepted by Staffordshire County Council to be within tolerance and they would not have deemed severe, especially as there is capacity on most of the roads within Amington from a technical point of view. For example, Sheepcoat Lane, as a strategically important road in Amington's infrastructure, is designed to take in excess of 400 vehicles an hour in both directions before it's considered a fastway. Understand entirely, if you live on that road, it's a change in circumstance, but from a technical point of view, which is what we had to consider when it went to the planning committee, it was in tolerance. My final point is in relation to councillor People's insinuation that it's the new residents on the new estate which are causing an uplift in traffic in Amington, and this is something I really wish to dispel immediately. Every single person who gets into their car to drive has to acknowledge that they are part of the traffic problem, as I was myself getting in my car in Amington to drive this evening. I'm prepared to find that we live in a society where more and more people are benefiting from increased mobility and the freedom to go where they wish and when they want. This means that there is likely to be an increase in vehicle movements for a long time to cur-. time to come. Whilst that is the case, myself and my colleagues on this council will continue to lobby to ensure that infrastructure is appropriate and to meet these growing demands. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. More than happy to take such a moment to address it.
Thank you, councillor Cook.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, as a point of personal information, at the time I was a county councillor, building hadn't started, so the traffic increase was hardly likely to have happened. As you will be aware from my question, residents are extremely concerned about the situation on Sheepcoat Lane and on the surrounding areas. I think it's really interesting, as a member of the planning committee, I've been to many planning meetings, where the constant refrain from members opposite is, oh dear, our roads can't take this, oh dear, our roads can't take it. Isn't it interesting that the one that brought in lots of cash for the council, oh, our roads could take it? Would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my view on that would be that we have to rely on Savage County Council as a planning committee. I used to be a planning committee member myself, but Savage County Council are our highways expert. What my colleagues comment about on the planning committee, not myself, and I can't sit here and talk to those members, but I will happily say in my previous career as a transport expert, we have to go on the rules. Personally, I don't agree with the fact when people sit there and go, oh, we can't cope. It's reality, we have to go by that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Cook. Right. Question number four. Once again, from councillor Sherry Feeble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The recent UN report on poverty in Britain highlighted the way in which women are suffering the most from changes to welfare payments. What steps are Tamworth Borough Council taking to ensure that women in particular receive the support they need with regard to housing and protection in their community?
Okay, councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you once again, councillor Feeble for your question. Tamwood Council ensures that all of our policies support those who are genuinely in need of assistance regardless of gender, age, disability or sexuality, or any other reason which could discriminate against one breed or another. Our housing policies are designed to ensure that when someone presents with a need, the personal family get the support they require. Our working fees and annual health and quality plan assist to tailor services to particular groups to ensure full and fair access to services. We have ensured that many, or any changes to welfare reforms and benefits changes are clearly highlighted on our websites, and we communicate that effectively to payments. We have also employed two officers responsible for working with those who need additional support on paying bills or rent, for example. We've invested £10,000 in Tamwood Advice Centre, and where relevant, we can bring it to the intention of universal credit payments that split payment can be requested, especially where domestic violence or financial issues is at one heart and more likely to dominate another. This is especially relevant to 73% of women in families now work, and this option means that split of payment can be requested to go more to one partner than the other. Tamwood Council is also the lead agency for the Tamwood Community Safety Partnership, which is supporting facilitating the local multi-agency risk assessment conferences to support and assist highest domestic abuse victims in their families. This does specifically seek to support things such as cleaning housing for these abused persons in the neighbourhood, for example. My personal view is we do not need to discriminate our policies towards women or anyone else of that matter. Instead, we need to ensure that as a society, we decrease the likelihood of poverty entirely through improved opportunities to get people into a more secure position, whether that be through work or education, or for those that really need it, including those such as those with disabilities in our society, we do have a welfare system in place to offer protection accordingly. From a national view, under this Conservative government, household incomes have never been higher, income inequality has fallen, and there are now one million fewer people living in absolute poverty compared to 2010. I hope this answers your question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Cook.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, some of the comments that you've made, I think, are very apocryphal, councillor Cook. You'll be aware that there was an article published in The Guardian on Friday, the 16th of November, with regard to the UN report, and it was described as hard-hitting. The headline said the UK government is in a state of denial about the impact of austerity policies on the town. The UN editor, Phil Paulston, who prepared the report, was critical of the mentality behind cuts and reforms introduced in the past few years by the Conservative government that have brought misery and torn at the social fabric. British compassion for those who are suffering has been replaced by a punitive, mean-spirited and callous approach. I knew somebody tonight was going to use the B-word, and it's knee. He also said that the most vulnerable and disadvantaged members of society will take the biggest hit from Brexit. And he said that changes to tax benefits have taken the highest toll on those least able to bear it, that the cost of austerity falling disproportionately on the poor, women, ethnic minorities, children, single parents, asylum seekers and people with disabilities. So it may be true that fewer people are living in absolute poverty, but one-fifth of people in this country are living in poverty down to the policies of the Conservative government. And I wonder if my colleague opposite would like to comment on that report?
Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, I don't actually read The Guardian, so if my councillor Feeble would like to circulate the article to me, I'm more than happy to take it up. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. All right. Question number five comes from councillor Pat Standen, and it's addressed to the leader of council, councillor Daniel Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At July's council meeting, councillor Simon Feeble asked a question on my behalf, as I was ill on the evening, regarding potential developments on our town's borders. In your response, you mentioned that you would be holding further meetings with nasling authorities and others. Could the leader of council provide an update to my citizens of the council on this topic?
Thank you, councillor Standen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillor Standen. Firstly, in the answer I gave to councillor Feeble earlier this year, in case Standen's absence, I believe I also said I would write an update for all members on the matter, and I confess and apologise that I have not yet completed this. I have not forgotten, I have a laptop full of information from Matthew Bowers in planning that I just need to collate into a briefing for all members. The issue is being is that the picture keeps shifting slightly to a small degree. Every time I believe I am ready, it changes. If councillor Standen will please indulge me, I will have this updated group of all members complete before the end of this year, happily circulated, and will happily meet with any councillor who asks questions. I will rest on that. Apologies, Mr. Mayor, I've not quite had a chance to complete what I promised councillor Standen. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cook. Councillor Standen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your reply, councillor Cook. Within the last couple of weeks, congestion on the A5 near its junction with the M42 has resulted in traffic queues building up for long periods of the day, impacting local traffic travelling in the Willicham and Stony Delph areas of the town. It took me more than 45 minutes to travel from my doctor's surgery to my homes, a journey that normally takes five minutes. Does the leader of the council agree that this type of problem would become an everyday occurrence if HS2 Works planned for the M42 A5 junction is not handled sensitively? And will he use his office to put pressure on HS2 and government ministers to ensure changes to Tamwood's infrastructure, support HS2 by a sufficient level, and to minimise the impact on the lives of the people who will look at Stony Delph and other areas of the town?
Thank you, councillor Standen. Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you, councillor Standen. I think I can refer to the answer I gave in the first question from councillor Feeble. You're absolutely correct, there are opportunities and risks with HS2 when stretching the junction. I think we need to work collectively as a council and keep leaning on HS2 where we can, to ensure those opportunities remain opportunities and try and push them through to actually get some mitigation to the A5. Everybody in this chamber knows the problem of the A5 M42 junction will only increase as more employment and is created in our boroughs, and more houses are built in meaningless gap. So we do need, wherever possible, to be one joint voice, leaning on the government's HS2, everybody can think of, to ensure that mitigation works, continue around the A5. I long believe that the A5 actually needs to be changed. Actually, if you don't get the A5, you shouldn't stop. This idea of a big roundabout, because there needs to be a flyover, a straight-up M42 crop-margway motion. But how we get highways England to understand that and fund it is another battle. But I assure councillor Standen, from my position, we are speaking to government through the MP, we are speaking to highways England, and we're having HS2 back in as soon as possible to continue our push to make them understand there is an opportunity here. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cook. All right. Question number six comes from councillor Standen, and it's addressed to councillor John Cheslin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could a cabinet member please advise what plans are being made to clean and maintain the kettle brook within the radius?
Thank you, councillor Cheslin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for questioning councillor Standen. In 2012, a survey of the entire watercourse network for Tamwood's bouncy ponds, including the stretch from the kettle brook to the town centre, was undertaken and a 20-year management plan was produced. This plan details timelines for maintenance, which includes the desilting of ponds and their frequencies, together with all the checks on grills, structures etcetera, to ensure water flow and alleviate flood risk. As part of the management plan, the kettle brook is walked approximately every three months. The grills are checked at this time and assessed for debris and water flow, and works arranged for clear such areas are undertaken as identified. In extreme weather, additional checks are made on hot spot grills to ensure water flow is maintained. If any issues are identified in between inspections, either by members or the public, they need to be reported in the usual way so that they can be attended to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Cheslin. Councillor Standen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I moved to my current house around 20 years ago, which is a short walk from the pond located by the Damwood Indicative Nature Reserve. Back then, you could see families of swans living there. However, in the interceding years, as the pond has continued to silt up, with the swans leaving, and later followed by the ducks, as you can virtually walk across it now, the grill lock gates, the bottoms of the dam, have been opened for the reason that let out material which has gone into the brook. Those areas I know, I've also been told by residents that there's issues with the brook as it passes under the A5, the pond on the other side, and I believe there's a breach further down which has been united up. Has a cabinet member advised when the plans are going to be very dredging, if you mention the 20-year planning in your response, would it be possible to forward a copy of that to you? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Standen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillor Standen. I'm sure we can find a copy of the plan. And regarding specific issues, I'm happy to have a chat and pick those up with you and discuss with the appropriate officers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Cheslin. We're going to move to our sixth on the agenda, and that is the referral for each on members' code of conduct by councillor Bilford. I believe that councillor Summers has the results of the committee subcommittee that sat on the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you may be aware, the Audit and Governance Committee, which I am chair, has a function to deal with standards issue referred to as being the absence of a full standalone standards committee. As have not been any standards issues in the history for the committee to consider, this matter has proven somewhat uncharted territory for officers and members. On the 21st of November 2018, an Audit and Governance Standards Subcommittee was called to deal with allegations of a potential breach of the councillor's code of conduct by councillor Robert Dorfler. The councillors have read the report, I'm sure they have, they will know the background to this agenda item and be familiar with what transpired. I don't intend to, of course, dwell too much on this. I will however read the executive summary per the report as background for those for that benefit of the agenda and to give some context. So the executive summary of the report is as follows. This is a complaint that was made as a result of the referendum in 2016, which in common parlance is now referred to as the Brexit referendum. And posts that were made on social media by councillor Robert Bilford have fallen around that event. The first post was, "Don't let them change your vote, take your own pen with you." The solicitor to the council and monitoring officer at the time asked for the post to be removed, as in short, Tamworth Borough Council was involved in the running of the election locally and took offence at the implications of the post. Councillor Robert Bilford refused to remove the post and then on the following day created a second post. "What a great day for common sense and the black pen." As a result, a formal complaint was raised through the council's procedure for making a complaint against a councillor. Mr. Mayor, I took no pleasure in chairing a meeting, excuse me, sat in judgment of a fellow councillor, and I'm sure that I did my colleagues, councillor Ford and councillor Cook. And I hope as councillor, we are reminded that anything we say and do as councillors and community leaders is subject to the code of conduct and scrutinised by the public as it were. A key test of the committee's deliberations focused on whether councillor Bilford was acting in his capacity as a councillor in making these posts on social media. The decisions that the committee came to were deliberated at quite some length with the aid of independent legal advice and an independent person. We found that councillor Bilford was acting in his capacity as a councillor and was in breach of six principles of the code of conduct. And as a result, the further decisions of the committee for the council that are present on behalf of the committee for the council to consider are as follows. That A, the findings in respect of the members' conduct to be published. B, the Subcommittee reports its findings to full council for information, which of course is this. C, and this is mainly for council to make a decision on tonight, that it be recommended to full council that councillor Bilford be issued with a formal censure or be reprimanded. I must stress, Mr. Mayor, that I'm sure, as you're completely aware, that the decisions of the committee are made and that there is no room for further deliberation on them. Any debate tonight should only centre around any recommendations that may be made tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Summers. Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to move some recommendations, Mr. Mayor, and I reserve the right, I'm not looking at this point to make a speech, but I do not think this is a political matter. I reserve the right to come back in a speech later in the debate, should treat one of my involvement. But I will move four recommendations with your permission, Mr. Mayor. Recommendation one, the council endorsed the Subcommittee's findings in respect of councillor Bilford presented for information. Number two, the council, having considered the matter, referred then by Audit and Governance Standards Subcommittee, noted the item for information and believed that a formal censure is appropriate in this case. The fact that the findings have been made public is not a sufficient outcome in circumstances. Number three, the matter be pressed released for transparency, but shall not quote any elected member as to remain a non-political matter. Number four, the exact wording of the written censure that is to be sent to councillor Bilford be delegated to the professional monitoring officer. I so need, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Feeble.
The Labour Group discussed this matter from the first time last night, and empowered me to second these recommendations, which we haven't seen, which meet with our agreement as to the nature of it, and I reserve the right should there be a debate, though I don't necessarily see the need for, or at least appropriate, that should be in debate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right. Councillor Bilford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Bilford, before you start, I would ask you to observe what councillor Standen, when I was going to discuss the reasons why we are actually to decide on how we're going to resolve the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are four questions in this area that are going to be directed to the Chair of the Subcommittee, Martin Summers. There are three issues, or there are three issues in this case, and any one would have been a full defence in itself. The first issue was whether I was acting in my official duties as a member. So my first question is this.
Councillor Bilford, I think you're reopening the...
I'm not reopening, I'm asking a question.
No, I really do think that's the case.
Okay, I'm asking a question.
And I'd be advised so as well.
I'm asking a question.
Well, it's relevant to what councillor Summers has said.
Absolutely, it is.
Providing it doesn't actually reexamine what the background was to the decision.
Absolutely. Given this case law that simply identifies myself, that simply identifies myself as a councillor is not sufficient, what other finding was there? That I was performing my duties as a member and not just taking part... That I was performing my duties as a member and not just taking part in private national political campaign? That's my first question.
Happy to respond, Mr Mayor, but as far as I'm concerned, the committee made their decision on this on that night. It is, as far as I'm concerned, reopening what should have been discussed there and then, and you had sufficient chance to ask the questions of any member of the committee, including the legal advisers that night, who made their decision, councillor Billcliff. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Next question from the... Councillor Billcliff, if you need to answer the last form of the questions in one minute.
Okay, I just wanted to give us some space. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Second question. Article 10 of the Human Rights provides for freedom of expression, particularly in political campaigns. It is an absolute defence which was identified in both Livingston and in other case law that we put to the tribunal, yet you make no finding on Article 10 and no mention at all, why not?
Mr Mayor, I'm happy to take questions one by one.
Well, what we're feeling is that those questions are actually reopening the case.
Yeah, I do think so, Mr Mayor, but I mean, I'm happy to hear all of the questions. And all I can say is, I am no legal expert, but I did take legal advice, as did the whole committee, of which you were happy at the time, absolutely happy at the time to make representations and ask questions of legality at the time. The decision of the committee, as far as I'm concerned, was made in this line. Thank you.
So can we move on to any other questions from anyone else, please? We feel that you are asking questions that are opening up the decision-making project of properties that...
Is it a point of order?
On what? Under what rule?
Under what we put it aside.
Is it point of order on the record, not on the filing?
On the record. Point of order.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. You've obviously stated the decision by the Subcommittee was unanimous, and indeed, that is the wording used in the minutes of the meeting and listed on Tamworth Borough Council's website. Cambridge University English Dictionary says this, "If a group of people are unanimous, they all agree about one particular matter, all vote the same way." And if a decision or judgment is unanimous, it is formed or supported by everyone in the group. I have reason to believe that that decision by this committee was not unanimous, as you have stated. Please, will you confirm if this decision was in fact unanimous?
Councillor Billcliff, I would be happy to confirm that, well, more to the point, actually, I was concerned that private deliberations of the committee have been made privy to yourselves, if that is indeed the case. The deliberations were private, I intend to repeat none of what happened in those deliberations. What I will confirm is that the legal adviser present, as far as she was concerned, for decisions, the outcomes we came to were unanimous. Thank you.
All right, we move on. Councillor Pickford?
May I ask a question of councillor Billcliff?
I understand that...
Your legal expert is...
Exactly. You're not allowed to actually pose a question to councillor Billcliff.
Then I'll pose a question to the Chair of the meeting. Councillor Summers, I understand that tonight on Facebook, a number of people are referring to this council as a kangaroo court. Would you agree with me that that is a most disrespectful approach to take to what has been Conchienja's attempt to deal with a difficult matter? And were it to be found that if any councillors or others were connected with that campaign, it would constitute a reason to investigate their conduct?
Thank you, councillor Pickford. I had been made aware this evening that there were such posts on social media, of which I haven't seen myself.
Nor have I.
No. I do think that they are perhaps inappropriate without having light of all of the facts. I don't really wish to comment any further on whether they substantiate any of the breaches.
Thank you, councillor Summers and councillor Pickford. Any other questions?
Mr Mayor, may I move that the question... May I move that the question...
We have councillor Cook next on the question line, and then councillor Morenga.
All right, I've moved it. I believe when I move it, it has to be voted. Sorry, Mr Mayor, I didn't mean to sit down to make you do. I believe on procedural rules, a motion to put the question has to be taken, and therefore the debate only continues if members wishing to continue, which is appropriate.
We go to debate on that subject then, on that point.
Mr Mayor, I'm moving that the question be put, because I believe that the difficulties of deciding the exact parameters, what questions can and cannot be asked, are problematic in the least circumstances. We've got two members who think they're interests, and it wouldn't be right for one of them to leave, because the debate reflects their position, so I'm suggesting that the council now go. That's why I've moved it, it's not part of the political, I think it deserves better, the reputation of the council.
Is anybody prepared to second that? Councillor Billcliff? Okay, we'll go with that. All those that are prepared to support, is that right?
Well, I've put it, it's a question. As I understand it, that means we're voting on what's been promoted and seconded.
Okay, all those in favour, have you heard? We are voting on whether the question will be put. Those that wish the question to be put, please raise a hand. We have three, four, four. Those are okay? Twelve are against, and the motions are... Shall we continue with the question? It was councillor Cook for the... Okay, councillor Cook, you raised your hand for a question, I believe.
Yes, Mr Mayor. Just quite right, we're going back to the motion that councillor Cook proposed, so we're debating that now, are there questions there?
Continue.
Can I just... Sorry, if I can ask the Chair of the board. My question. Can I just ask if you received my email? We got the... The anonymous issue. Did I have to? Am I received an email about the minutes etc. While the time I was able to read it, yeah, it was already being published.
Yes, I did receive your email. I find it wholly inappropriate that any member of the committee should, as far as I'm concerned, backtrack on the position that made during the meeting, and I do not wish to go into any of the private deliberations, other than to say that, as far as I was concerned, and I believe every member of that...
Councillor Summers, I'm being advised that we're actually reopening the debate.
Yeah, no, fair enough, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to say that I've received the email and I'm confident that, as of the meeting, and the legal advice received, that we were unanimous in our outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Summers. Councillor Morenga?
It's not a question, it's just a statement of, if I may use it. I was the Chair of Standards for three or four years in the past, and if I had several people come before me, never ever mentioned anybody's name, nothing, and anything that was decided in that meeting with the people that were judging, if that's the right word to use, and you've also got an independent person there as well, the solicitor there, should have never ever gone out of the room. You keep your own counsel, and what councillor Martin Summers said is quite true. Anybody that backtracks on anything like that is right out of order. And that's all I would like to say, because what Martin Summers has said is exactly right.
Thank you, councillor Gant. We're now moving to debate. Sorry, councillor, you've had one question, we were just in questions.
Yeah, I'm in.
I hadn't actually gone through to debate at that point in time, but I am now moving to debate. If you wish to put your hand up, then feel free. Councillor Billcliff?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm not blind, I can see what is really going on here, and it's not nice. But don't take my word for it. There are several people, members of the public, some who are here tonight, and I am prepared to be tried by the court of the public opinion. My question is, are they counsel? There are some comments, and some of the ordinary people, after two and a half years of secrecy, were allowed to watch a final four-hour hearing. The day after the hearing, Alderman, Chris Cook Senior, my representative, threw out a list to say, and I quote, "As councillor Billcliff's representative, I am confident we overwhelmingly wiped the floor with a prosecution." The complaint was made by TBC, by TBC's old senior officer, solicitor to the council. It should be noted and made public that there was also a pre-hearing Subcommittee, where various serious concerns about procedures were looked at. The Subcommittee suggested these should be put to full counsel for review. That does not change the fact that these concerns have all impacted on this case. Therefore, I wish to make an amendment, and my amendment would be this, that the recommendation for censure or reprimand be deferred until procedural issues for the code of conduct procedure have been properly reviewed by the council, and that any possible risks to this decision have been assessed. Looking for a second.
You seconded, councillor Cook.
Mr Mayor, might I raise on a point of order? With respect, it's inappropriate for you to take a second motion, you've already got one substantive motion which is yet to be dealt with. It would be entirely inappropriate for you to take the second motion. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Both clarification from councillor Cook.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, I will confess this was a piece of genius, councillor, I found many, many years ago, and I'm looking to my legal expert. As councillor Billcliff's amendment completely negates one of the motions, therefore it's not an amendment which needs voting down. You cannot move an amendment that negates the original motion, otherwise the motion should never be moved. So that amendment cannot be lifted, surely. I must leave as a part of the case. Councillor Billcliff, if it negates the amendment, it's against the motion, it just goes against the motion.
So we're going to debate the amendment, uh-huh? Anyone want to contribute to that? Councillor Cook, Daniel Cook?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to first of all explain why I, and I think some of my Conservative colleagues, voted against councillor Billcliff's motion for the question to be put. I do not agree in any way, shape or form with anything councillor Billcliff has done through this entire process. However, I am a great believer in British democracy, and British democracy demands, at this point he's been voted on, he has a right to his voice, and I'll fight to my death for anybody to have the right to their voice. So I want to turn down that motion so you have the right to speak, and I want you to remember that. Let's actually analyse what we're talking about here, and I'm not reopening the case. Basically, a councillor, as a councillor, if you want to put it in broader terms, a third tier of us are the board of directors. Tamworth Borough Council is the company, and one of those board of directors inadvertently, and I don't think he did it deliberately, inadvertently called members of staff to come up. In any other avenue of life, that would be an instant resignation, but not as a councillor, because you're elected, you've got freedom to vote. As a councillor, you have to listen to all people's opinions, to understand, to be compassionate. Yet, when staff from this building were offending, nobody would react, councillor Billcliff didn't do anything, just said, "Now, I'm elected councillor, I'm doing nothing." But again, I wanted councillor Billcliff to have his right to have his voice. Now, he's moved his amendment, and I'm not going to vote for it, because I stand behind the four motions I moved, simply because if we allow breach to the code of conduct, the code of conduct is pointless. We need to have... We need to have rules that govern our behaviour. Otherwise, it's a free-for-all. In a modern liberal Western democracy, there must be standards. And those standards have been failed, and a censorship is required. Therefore, I will not vote for that amendment. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Cook. Councillor Summers.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to point out that there were some 300 pages of material for the committee to consider. And yes, it took us to consider, although it's time to go through it, to consider every argument in there, which we did. And as a courtesy, some of the procedural issues that we had to have a separate meeting for, because there were so many, as a result of that, we did extend the courtesy that those would be fed into the review of the COVID conduct. And I'm looking for confirmation that it wasn't indeed put to full counsel, if it's just as a courtesy, where there's no mechanism to do so, it's just to be put into the review. And that was a courtesy to Councillor Biltford and his representative, who happened to find things that maybe had not been tested in some time, as these do not tend to happen, these standards cases. So I just wanted to clarify that, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Summers. Nobody else to debate? Councillor people, some of the...
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have to say, the comments from Councillor Cook about why they didn't support the motion to be put were, I think, misplaced. First of all, because the amendment asked us to refer it back. I had no intention of supporting referring it back. But I think it was very wrong to suggest that he somehow believed that it was important for Councillor Biltford to have his voice, and therefore somehow I didn't. I felt Councillor Biltford had a chance to speak. And I also felt that there was a big chance that everybody could end up making the whole council look worse. And I appreciate it's very difficult, because what's the oxygen of publicity? It's both a possibility to somebody to say more than they should, and I think that's already happened. I know that we should debate these things, but I think it's incredibly difficult. And there are very few organisations that are capable of managing their own. You only have to see how poorly some public companies have dealt with their eras chief executives, to know that these things, self-referral is very difficult. So my reason for moving the motion was to protect the membership of the council from the inevitable minefield. Knowing full well, and as we've already heard from Councillor Biltford, he wants to appeal to the Court of Public Opinion. I think historical links could be drawn, but I'm not going to make them, because I'm not going to fall into the trap of other people who've said that in the past, because I'm in no way comparing the two. But what I would say is that I think now that we've got to this point, and in fact, some of what's been said since proves I was probably not wrong. And certainly not wrong in intention. Councillor Biltford deserves his opportunity to speak. That's right and proper. But I also think it's important to protect the whole council from making it worse than it is already, to have this discussion necessary because of the conduct of this group.
Thank you, Councillor Biltford. I think we're at the point where we go to the vote on the proposed amendment. Any members wishing to vote for it, please raise their hands. On the amendments, yeah. So we have two for it. Those against? So that is unanimous.
Mr Mayor, first of all, without issues between two schoolteachers, you can't be unanimous about your...
Majority?
Absolutely, but also, Mr Mayor, Councillor Sanders declared his interest earlier and stayed, and needs to be recorded. Normally, it wouldn't matter so much, but given that he declared his interest, it's important it's recorded, he's stayed. But the only thing I had to...
Okay, so the... We're now going to the vote on the substantive motion that Daniel Cook, Councillor Daniel Cook, proposed. Councillor people, some of the people seconded. So those that wish to vote for Daniel Cook, Councillor Cook's proposal... So please raise your hands. For correctness, those against? And extension, one. So...
Could we note the extension for the record?
I'm sure it will be, sir. Yeah? So the motion is carried. Thank you. Right, we move to item seven on the agenda, which is Treasury Management Strategy Statement and Annual Investment Strategy Midyear Review Report 2018... No, 2019, presented by Councillor Pritchard.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The Christmas Council meeting will be back without financial reports from me, so we'll have to treat it severely. This is to present members with the mid-year review of the Treasury Management Strategy Statement and Annual Investment Strategy. The councils complied with all the professional codes, statutes and guidance. There are no issues to report regarding non-compliance or approved financial indicators. And the investment portfolio renewal for the first six months is at all 0.77%, which compares favourably with our benchmarked group. So if there are any questions under the board?
Thank you, Councillor Pritchard. Councillor Daniel Cook? No questions? Councillor Pritchard?
Who the recommendations, Mr Mayor? Second, Mr Mayor, is the other one.
Okay, thank you. So we debate it, then? Councillor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm going to ask the blue group to accept an additional recommendation. And the reason I'm asking you to do that is I believe there is cross-party agreement that our chances of maintaining our commercial investment rely upon our own local knowledge and skills. Those of you who were fascinated enough to be wanting to see Mrs May's statement to the House of Commons yesterday would have caught about two questions earlier, a question from Michael Fabrik, the MP for Lichfield, saying that Lichfield Tamworth Mechanica are part of the GBS LET and that he wanted us to have that freedom to be part of that GBS LET, thus achieving the rare situation of my agreeing with Fabrik. However, the minister's reply was that the rationalisation of LETs should be taking place so that we can only belong to one LET and that that should be based on county geography. And because of the fact that I believe it is very much in our interest to retain localism and so on, I'm asking the member, Councillor Pritchard, who moved the motion, to accept the additional recommendation that all councillors are invited to sign a letter to both the Secretary of State and the Shadow Secretary of State, calling upon them to leave it to Tamworth to decide what is the best method for us to deal with LETs. Because I know about conversations, I think this is a shared concern, that we'll be squeezed into Staffordshire LET for no better reason than the fact that when the Normans came to England, they decided that Tamworth was a lot of troublemakers and drew the boundary here. It has no regular relationship to our economic geography. And whilst that might change, I would like to do that. So I'd like the additional recommendation that this council invites members to sign a common letter to the Secretary of State. I have already had... Shall I let you take it? I have already had a conversation with the Shadow Secretary of State, and he agreed with me, there's no reason why Her Majesty's need to send a Lord Lieutenant to Staffordshire should get in the way of which LET we're in, right? Her Majesty wants a Lord Lieutenant for Staffordshire or Warwickshire, that's great, they carry on doing the ceremonial stuff. But what matters to us is where our economic geography lies. And to hear the minister yesterday in Parliament saying that, you know, rationalisation should override the economic geography is a view that I doubt is shared on the other side of the chamber either. And because it only happened yesterday, and there isn't a way of bringing in emergency motion, I'm asking the member if he'll accept that as an additional recommendation, so that we can back up the efforts which have already been made by our MP and by others. I asked for a second for that.
Do we have a second?
I'm asking the...
Do you think you'll answer the question first?
I'll speak on the proposed amendment. I would say, given this could absolutely nothing to do with this report, I mean, there's an alteration to the recommendation that I'm happy to circulate to all the common letters in the next few days that we all consider signing. I know many councillors across the area have done the same thing. I know the leaders have already done the same thing. I know many of these have done the same thing. So I'm more than happy to get something drafted in the next few days and circulated. But really, yes, it's something we should do as a report and see what we need to implement as an alteration to the report. But I'm happy to do it anyway, yeah, by assurance of that.
Mr Mayor, I shall take assurance as being that the object has achieved whatever the procedural matter. Can I clarify that for all members?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I know it's not on the subject, but it implies what Simon said. I think everybody knows that I'm opposed to the combined authorities, LEPs, and you. Who voted for any of them? Nobody. I'm dead opposed against them. It's brought another two tiers of government to this country. So I'm dead opposed to it, and I won't be signing that declaration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Biltford. Okay, we move to debate.
Mr Mayor, I ask you not to say you've fed a seat while I was...
Okay, we'll move to the vote then.
By the way, please, just so Mr Mayor can say, procedure, as I've been such a stickler of the recommendations. So thanks for the work they've done. Again, we produce a report that provides the council's priorities with all rules. I'm sure John Leeley, who's left us, we have to know that he's a step-writer, he will work. And just in terms of the point made about LETs and CA's, well, I think he voted for this. I'd just like to point out that it was this chamber that voted to join any of these things in unanimity.
Thank you, Councillor Pritchard. Right, well, vote on the substantive issue, sorry, motion, that's already been proposed and seconded. Those for it, raise your hands, please. I think I can say it's unanimous. Thank you. Right, item eight, Local Council Tax Reduction Scheme 2019/2020. Reports of portfolio holder for assets and finance. Councillor Pritchard.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The report is to advise members and feedback of the recently undertaken consultation on the proposed tax reduction scheme for the next natural year. Before we make any changes to the scheme required to consult public, as again, as a previous note, it wasn't a great take on what we do, everything we can to ensure that members of the public are both aware of this and are inclined to respond. The recommendation for members this evening is that the council considers the results of the consultation on the current scheme, carried out from August to October this year, and it also allows, otherwise, the proposed recommendation changes in detail as follows. The base scheme goes forward with the following changes: that the local council tax reduction scheme for working-age customers for eighteen, sorry, for nineteen, twenty, continue to be aligned with applicable amounts with those housing benefit. And that the local council tax reduction scheme for nineteen, twenty be aligned with universal credit regulations for self-employed working age. So I'd like to take any questions, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Pritchard. Councillor Cook?
Second, Mr Mayor, is the other one.
Okay. Any questions? Councillor Bob?
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Good evening.
I'm not sure I have put the portfolio holder put on the consultation that was undertaken on this particular issue.
Okay, Councillor Bob?
I say, I put all allowance on staff to do all they can to get people to engage in it. It's just not a very exciting subject. We tend not to get a huge amount of people taking part in these type of consultations.
Not sure that was an answer, but let's press on. In undertaking the consultation, why did you take the approach that you did rather than survey those who were directly affected by these proposals?
We do, we do all efforts we can to make everybody aware, not just people affected by this scheme, but all residents, all right there. And the scheme is open for them to be consulted on and to make recommendations and comment on. So we do everything we can to get everybody in town to engage in this. We know it's a problem that they do all the time.
Thank you, Councillor Pritchard.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Again, not an answer. I thought I was being generous, the portfolio holder, by not asking two questions in the previous one. But I can see that that clearly wasn't justified. Within the report, it's actually conceded that the consultation is not statistically valid. But we can give it at all.
Councillor Pritchard?
That's up to members to decide individually. This is all we have to go on. These are the people who've decided to take part in it. This is what we have to go on by making those decisions.
Thank you, Councillor Pritchard. Any other questions? Mrs Summers?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. On page forty-two of the report, the second item down and third item with question mark, regarding the seventy-five percent on properties on Van Deen and Burg. The only thing that anybody who's on second bandy or higher would be treated as if they're on a bandy. Just wondering what the cost would be if they were actually treated as a... The reason I ask is, people who are on high properties have paid in more over the years. So there's potential for arguing that they're putting more when it's their turn to take out, maybe a bit of the way should be given. If there's a small cost on there, you know, in what we're looking at. On the following point regarding savings of up to sixteen thousand pounds, is that just savings or does that include other assets such as properties or shares and all? Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Summers. Councillor Pritchard? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
So I have one question regarding the second part, as I understand it, savings, not assets, it's savings, I think.
And the first question? Yeah, sorry, we'll have to repeat it. Yeah, please. If you're inside bandy property and you're claiming cash deduction you get treated as if you were in a lower band. So you don't get as much money as you potentially could. It's just, what the cost would be if we, or if you had any idea what the costs were if we had to treat them so? If you haven't got the bandy, I'm more than happy to receive any of our later...
I'll have to get those research papers circulated. Thank you.
Any more questions? No, we move to debate. Anyone wish to debate? Councillor Bob? That's a problem.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I could, two main issues with a question in relation to the consultation already and that is conceded within the report, that consultation, having, uh, basically around a hundred respondents, is not statistically valid. In actual fact, that rather, um, overstates the fact. It's downright misleading, if truth be told, because half of the people who responded to the consultation, uh, are retired, um, and therefore are not affected in the slightest degree by these proposals. Um, not to have taken account of the people who were directly affected, and it may well be that some obscure corner in the council's website, there was some indicator people could be, but I don't think a great effort has been gone into here. What in fact has happened, I suspect, is that they've simply been a box ticking exercise whereby they've been told they must do a consultation. How can we do it with a minimum of inconvenience? And the result, as we can see, is what we have here. And quite frankly, it's not even worth, uh, any April it is written on. But the more substantial thing is a major change to bring us into line with, um, the much maligned universal credit, and in particular in relation to self-employment. Now, of course, talking to our various constituents, we've heard many cases of people becoming self-employed. Uh, many, um, actively encouraged to do so by various government authorities, but when you actually talk to them in some detail, it's quite evident that the amount of money that they're actually earning are quite pitiful. And to make assumptions, which is proposed here and is also the case in universal credit, that people are actually earning a money which in many cases is substantially greater than they are, quite frankly, is deceitful and it's, um, not something that I think we should be anyway party to. I suspect that this has not been challenged in the courts, I could be wrong in that regard, but I suspect if it was challenged in the courts, this would not stand either in terms of universal credit or with ourselves. Because when you substitute some assumptions rather than the reality, which should be available, because it has to be available when you've got that for us, um, then quite frankly, you are creating a fiction instead of a reality. That is not something which I would wish for any party to. And quite frankly, I suspect, and wouldn't be surprised, as there are any around this chamber who would in fact do so, um, it's essentially kicking teeth to people who are struggling to make an income from self-employment and in most cases, or in many cases, are going to take it up in recent years and not even earning a minimum wage. So I would ask that this be voted against. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bellkay. That's a good one.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. One way or another, we get to this point every year with this report. Let's say we all agree with councillor Faulner, we vote the same. Two things will happen. The section one five one on, so the Faulner will pass out because he'll instantly realise we have to go back out to consultation, which means we couldn't meet our statutory deadline and set a budget by the end of February, and this council will be in hell of a lot of trouble with the government, as I press the button. Yeah, which, the points that have just been raised, I'm not getting into the whole of their value or not, the points that have just been raised should have been made in the consultation in June, then this council could have looked into the matters councillor Faulner raised and really analysed, is there a real effect on people by the time you're ready. If we refuse to chip on that at the end of the process, this council moves to a point you cannot set its own budget because we cannot set council tax. We cannot refuse to chip on it, it needs to be done in June. Okay, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bellkay. The other members want to get a question?
Yeah, councillor James. I think you will. The only thing, I think Mr Mayor was trying to speak to you before.
Councillor James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I find it ironic that councillor Faulner says this report should be ignored because only one hundred residents responded, yet a few years ago we voted against the closure of the golf course because it was by one hundred and ninety-five residents. One hundred and ninety-five members, probably one hundred and forty-two dead residents. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. That's a big one.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm grateful that I waited for that contribution so I could pick it up. Um, what councillor Faulner has done, Mr Mayor, is not, and this is typical of the job in practice, to say that the whole report means we now can't go forward. What councillor Faulner's throwing in question is recommendation two B, which relates specifically to the universal credit regulations in self-employed age workers. That's what he's done. He's done it not because we couldn't raise this over here, because until these recommendations are met, what the council has deliberated on and come out with doesn't come until then. So we're not throwing out everything, making it so complicated. I mean, we really should try and avoid it firmly when we go back to back to the... All right, we could pass one, two A and two B, still be in debate and in terms of the marginality, what we may allow into the budget. So we know full well that this council managed to unspend its budget from last year and the year before, and therefore there is no way the amount of money in this regard could stop us setting a minimum budget. So let's, let's sort of stop, you know, dragging everything back to some way of, oh, we hadn't thought of that, now we're not sure. That's what councillor Faulner said. And it could well be that were the mover of the motion, so minded, he could simply say, I'm happy to take that as we will look at them actually and bring it back to the next meeting. Because all that councillor Faulner has pointed out is that when HMRC makes an assumption about how much people earn, it's not what they earn necessarily, and that can be a problem. I used to work in finance in London, many years back now, and I can remember in the days of self-declaration mortgages, we had taxi drivers declaring an income of forty-five thousand a year, this was in the late eighties, and people speculating as to whether the figure on the self-declared mortgage form matched that on the HMRC returns. The HMRC now adopts apparently a process whereby they make an assumption, I know one chap who runs a small business, he says they assume he makes a percentage on his sales, so if his sales are X, then his profit is ten percent. He said that, that's how they operate when they're trying to manage small businesses. All this is saying is, is that a fair assumption to make when we know full well that universal credit and all the difficulties that have a tendency upon its introduction have led the government to actually delay. So whilst I appreciate all the calculators coming out and the lack of attention being paid for what we're saying, I have made my point for the support of what councillor Faulner said. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bellkay. Uh, councillor Criscow.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, reflecting on that, I have to agree, um... Using, um, myself, for example, um, if I actually went on to universal, I have, um, my hours, uh, beside, I don't know, I had, um, times I, from the, from the, uh, life etc., uh, for the, um, kind of, um, tax and social insurance etc. Don't have to, they have, I, um, counsel, commander as well, um, to their records, I'm on the books of thousands a year, I barely make, uh, like an arthritic, so, through our task weight, it can really affect the lives of, further going, other people, young businesses as well.
Thank you, councillor Bellkay. Anyone else?
Councillor Bellkay. Um, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, covering a few points made during the, uh, the debate on this. In terms of the consultation committee, it was in the Herald twice, um, repeatedly pushed online, I saw it on the site, I tell everyone all the time, since the citizen panel, it's been on the council's social media platforms, it's been posted out from this building, um, to, uh, pressed out from the other building. Um, so the council offices have done all they can to get people to engage in the consultation, I believe, it was sent directly to councillors, so, you know, I hope councillor Faulner, you took part in the consultation, that was sent directly to yourself as well. Um, I do lay down this challenge to councillor Faulner, if you think you're able to have to, the officers please do. Um, if you think you can get more people to respond, um, I would very much welcome that. Um, next year, it will be more important because I'd like a big changes to the scheme as the universal credit rolls out fully in town, which will maybe look at a band E model, which some of the local authorities have done. So there will be change, more changes to the scheme next year. So I do hope we take up that challenge and get more people to engage in the consultation. Um, just covering the points made about the minimum income floor, the points made about, you know, the assumption what people earn and they may not earn that are entirely valid, but also the opposite is true. You may be self-employed and your business is actually doing quite well, but you're not drawing a wage from it, in which case you'd be eligible for council tax reduction when you honestly really don't need it. So we have to assume also that if we're assuming one case is true, the other case is true as well. So we have to come to a balance and that's what this, uh, recommendation is striking to do. We're trying to come up with a scheme that is both favorable to the taxpayer and fair to the claimants as well. So I think it's a fair balance, I think it's a fair scheme and I'm happy to recommend it to the members present tonight and I hope the members will vote for it.
Thank you, councillor Bellkay. It has already been moved and seconded.
We're opposed to three recommendations, we think it's separate.
Okay. Um, are all members happy that we vote on those three points?
In recommendations, yeah.
Yeah? Okay, we'll vote on that. Uh, those members that we should support, councillor Faulner, please raise your hand.
So we're voting on a procedural issue.
Really? Yeah, okay. We're taking each one in visually, aren't we? So, first one was? Okay, recommendations, the councillor, sorry, the council considers the results of the proposed consultation on current scheme carried out from two thousand and eighteen August to October of that year scheme, and endorse or otherwise the proposed recommended changes detailed in the law. Um, so... Okay. Uh, still, the scheme has a little bit of following, that the local council tax reduction scheme for working age customers for two thousand and nineteen twenty will continue to be aligned to applicable amounts with those of housing benefits.
Mr Mayor, you're, you're reading all three, but I thought we were taking them separately.
I thought so.
So are we agreeing? We've all got them in front of us.
Yeah.
But can I?
Okay, first record, I need to walk.
No, I have read it, thank you, councillor Bellkay, I don't need you to tell me to do this. The words of order, Mr Mayor, councillor Bellkay just said that he's glad that's on camera, since he's sitting there and I've got it directly in relation to me, can I just make my point? I think if you want to tell people that we did, you should treat other councils with respect. I've already seen that. It doesn't mean you have to have one and two A and two B, you can have one and two A, but not two B.
Should be a lot.
Yeah, we'd already had that, Joe, I really, any old gentleman's stand is always very good at providing, to run there or come to being asked for that.
so I've been advised that, um, we take one and two A as a recommendation and we vote on that, and then we vote on B, two B.
Yeah.
Those of you to vote on one and two A and accept that, please raise your hands. Uh, so we then take, okay, uh, against? Abstain. Okay, so, now four for two B.
In favour of two.
In favour of two.
Okay, we have sixteen four, proposed for two B. Those against, please. And we have eight against. Um, no abstentions, so, um, two A.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Two B, that I don't want.
The whole one goes.
All right, finally, we are just in the right of time. You guys generally act as, as I've said to the principles.
Mr Mayor, can I just, you said sixteen people voted for, I've got sixteen over there, plus, I voted for it, don't I? So, you could say sixteen, I voted for that motion and I've got sixteen over there for myself, um, you know, once, or seventeen.
I, I assume, councillor James, that...
If I may, apologies, I couldn't see councillor Clements from where I was sitting, so...
Thank you. I have to make a proper apologies to James. All right. Thank you, councillor James. So, say again, again in right of time, revised gambling act two thousand and five stating to principles, and, um, reports put forward by the portfolio holder for community's own partnerships.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to first start by thanking the hard work indeed by officers from structure and Staffordshire authorities, in particular... in particular council officers, Lee Lewis and Connor. Also to fellow councillors, in particular Shuri and Simon People for your contribution, and other consultees who have worked to produce revisions to the policy statement to reflect the latest guidance issued to licensing authorities by the gambling authority. In essence, section 349 of the gambling act 2005 requires Tamworth Borough Council as a licensing authority to bear and publish a statement of principles every three years, this is a legal requirement. This is a further requirement of the act that the revised principles must be approved at a meeting of full council. The council statement of principles is due for revision by 30 January 2019. The statement will last for a period of three years, but may be reviewed at any time by this authority. The current report is in its fourth incarnation and the policy has made a number of appearances this year. Licensing committee in June and October, infrastructure and growth scrutiny committee, uh, in October, and also the consultation period between July and September of this year, from which a revised statement of principles has been prepared and presented for approval. The main objectives of the statement as such prevent gambling from being a source of crime disorder, being associated with crime disorder, or being used to support crime. Ensuring that gambling is conducted in a fair and open way, and protecting children and other vulnerable persons from being harmed or exploited by gambling. The revised statement increases the focus on the latter, on the safeguarding of children, particularly in relation to child exploitation and young people, and young people and adults with care and support needs. There is a nationally recognised view that there is a greater need to focus on understanding and mitigating gambling-related harm more broadly, rather than focusing on a problem gambling alone. The statement also links into community safety and is covered under the Crime and Disorder Act of 1998. Also Tamworth Borough Council's Child Protection Team are a responsible authority under the gambling act of 2005. In this capacity, they are required to ensure that decisions made by the team are taken with due regard to the need to safeguard and promote welfare in children. Further details can be found within the report as well as the statement principles itself. I am required to remind members that licensing is a statutory undertaking, should the proposals in this report not be adopted, it would be a term for a council, the position of being unable to undertake statutory responsibilities and functions under the act. So I move the resulting statement of principles to consult document representing the results of consultation as well as combined inputs from a number of parties which are present, members, for their approval and adoption. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor.
I'd like to second the motion, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much. If you have any questions. Debate.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, you'll get there in here.
I will.
And as my dad used to say, call me what you like, but don't call me lady Midair. Um, I'd like to thank the portfolio holder for his kind words. Um, I spent a very interesting morning with the officer concerns, Mr Lewis, going through the document, and it was a really interesting and useful thing to do. Um, I completely endorse what the portfolio holder's saying about the fact that we need this statement of policy, and I hope that we've got a document that is fit for purpose, and I know that, um, Mr Lewis and his team have put in a lot of work on it. Um, I would just like to make a very short plea that we do keep this area very much in the forefront of our minds because, uh, I think gambling can be a real problem, we all know that that can be a real problem. Um, a friend of mine has recently been appointed head of compliance at the gambling commission, and she was giving me some statistics that they have recently come up with, uh, which shows that there are decidedly some problem groups. So whilst gambling generally might be a problem for 1 in 100 of the general population, when you drill down into, for example, young men between sort of 18 and 25, it becomes a very, very much bigger proportion. So, uh, given that we know that we have a number of people in Tamworth who do have economic difficulties, uh, I think we need to do everything we can as a council to support them to make sure that their enjoyment doesn't become addiction, which then starts a slippery slope to, um, all sorts of unwanted, um, consequences. But, uh, thank you, I'm very happy to support the report.
Thank you councillor People.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm, uh, happy to see through the generosity of the Labour group to be able to vote against this tonight, not because I think the officers have done a very good job, um, I'm not sure I deserve the same credit, as councillor Shuri for the amount of input I, I had, but, uh, I put my best pen forward at various points and certainly supported, uh, Mr Lewis when he circulated details about the changes to fixed on betting machines. I mean, in many ways, not asking other people to vote against it tonight because we do have to have a policy, and as my learned colleague has already said, it's a very sound response to what is required of our legal obligations. Um, but I personally feel that the government is wrong in asking us to create a policy around which we protect people from something which is dangerous to the best we can without being able, personally, to say, I would say, to start from a premise of, if a new gambling place opens, it will damage society. What will be done to mitigate that damage? And on those moral grounds, I don't want to appear to approve a policy which I know is soundly drawn up, conscientiously drawn up, and reflects well on the council in having a policy that is in place that is appropriate within the law of the land. But I don't agree with the way the law balances our responsibilities. So for that reason, I should be voting against. I'm not asking other people to do so unless they share my particular view. I'm, and I respect, and I stress I respect the, uh, wishes of the portfolio holder in bringing this report. It's no criticism of him, no criticism of the officers. It's a criticism of what I feel is a balance in society whereby we are meant to allow gambling unless we can prove that they're corrupting people. I personally think that balance is fundamentally wrong in society, and for that reason, I should record my vote against. But it is no reflection on anybody, any of the work, any of you that know me, know that I think the world of Shuri. And if she says it's a policy on, on the basis of her legal judgment, I'm more than happy with that, and I would have accepted that equally if you weren't here from, from our, um, colleagues. But I just personally cannot endorse a social balance that puts the onus on us to prove there's something wrong with gambling rather than the gambling industry to prove that they are not knocking us, as councillor Shuri People said. We have, I've followed up on my promise at Portcourts Street to have a look and find more statistics. The statistics the gambling commission are coming up with identify young males, 18 to 25, at somewhere around 25 to 30 times more likely to be in the problem gambling zone. We have a lot of those people in our town, and I want to see a time when we could write a policy that gets a bigger, wider view of that than it can do at the moment. So that's why I'm doing it, principle thing, and it in no way reflects on any of those who vote for it because it's a sound and sensible policy within the context of the legal framework. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor People. Anyone else? Yes, councillor Faulkner.
Thank you very much. My two colleagues have been most eloquent, and I've been a lot of... Well, we're lying, I didn't worry about that. But that's it all. I mean, my own views are very much in conformity with what councillor Simon People has said. I mean, fundamentally, there has grown up in this country the idea that suddenly you can get rich by buying the lottery ticket or by gambling. The only people who are going to get rich are the, um, gambling companies. And quite frankly, I think, uh, the idea that this is the way to maintain our country is deeply misleading. If you're going to, um, do well, fundamentally you need to train up yourself and you need to work hard. And anything that in any way undermines that, quite frankly undermines this country. Gambling, to my mind, is a social ill. Uh, I don't even buy lottery tickets, I've got to tell you this. But I go down to local shops and I see people with their scratch cards buying lottery tickets. Usually people who can ill afford to spend a lot of money. I'll vote for this proposal because it has, it obviously informs, and we do need something in place. But realistically, the more restrictive on gambling we can make this, to my mind, the better. Because we're misleading an awful lot of people that certainly didn't get rich, we're corrupting their morals as well, and very often, other people, particularly children, depend on the money that is being squandered on gambling. And realistically, I don't think we can condone that as it stands. But of course, that's not what this policy, to my mind, is about. We really do need to, um, keep an eye on that, and if the opportunity do arise to perhaps skew it, we should take it.
Thank you councillor Faulkner. All right. Anyone else, no? Okay, we'll get to the vote. Or would you like to? Final answer, councillor Dunes.
There's one thing I've always pointed out, that in the general statement itself, it actually highlights that you cannot take into consideration moral objections. I understand your point of view, but if you could also adopt the same thing with the drinking trade and also be smoking, I'll be honest, I'm not a big fan, I don't like smokers, so, uh, we all have that personal grievances. Uh, but we have to respect, uh, people's freedom to indulge in that. Uh, if people do it to excess, we're here to try and work with them and put them back on the court. Uh, of course, I'll be honest, I used to look at fruit machines for myself until somebody explained how they work, and after that I lost complete interest in them, so I knew you couldn't win. But I would like to thank you for your contribution towards the report, and I did ask Shuri before this, should I give you equal billing on that? But, uh, in spirit, I'd like to wish you a merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dunes. We go to the vote. Those in favour, please raise their hand. Okay, those against? All right. So that's carried in, thank you. Let's see, um, it is there, yes, it is there. Um, thanks everyone for coming tonight, and I wish you all a happy, uh, festive period. I think that's relatively correct.
Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please be up standing for the mayor of Tamworth.